Sound.
All right.
Whatever.
Turn your office here.
Um.
Yes.
How much do you want?
Either.
Two hundred.
She's.
That's all going very good.
That's right, we've done right there again. I have these.
I'm mean.
Oh, just.
Are you having that event afterwards or is that later?
Uh, let's go on our corner.
Yeah.
July.
I don't know.
Ready on the floor.
Okay.
Yeah, good.
Yep.
Yeah, you guys can reach out and talk.
Great.
Appreciate it.
It's the May fourteenth monthly meeting of the Millbrook Board of Trustees and you can sign for the pledge.
I delegiance to the flag of the United States of America in the United Republic where it stands one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Clark with.
But I know Ruby needs to be sit down.
Mayor Doral.
Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Murphy.
Here.
Trustee Butler.
Here. Trustee Nelson.
Here.
Trustee Sutti.
Here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I believe Clerk Witt sent around some minutes from the April meeting. Um, any issues, corrections, additions, deductions. I have a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion approved.
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor?
All in.
Right.
Thank you. The vouchers are going around as well. Um, I'll just ask for a motion to approve those now. Uh, kind of motion. Make the motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Thank you. Senator Houston is not here. We shall move to fire chief.
Uh, nothing too crazy. A little bit higher on the EMS calls. Um, we had several that were, uh, second call in the district, um, four times actually. Um, miscellaneous calls. Um, one was a horse rescue on Easter Sunday morning and the other one was a flower pot smoking by the light at Church Street. Um, I've been too major there luckily and came to the flower pot. Um, other than that, uh, the volunteer ambulance got it nine times, went to the hospital for. Uh, the monthly drills, we had one already on forcible entry and we'll be having another one, uh, for ladders and ventilation. Um, we've been able to use the old training center right there on forty-four by the Cottonwood to do some of this training. So, cool. That's been awesome. And other than that, uh, that's about it for calls. Any questions on that anyone?
How, any word about what's going on with, um, or just how the the fly cars are going and the and the county stuff?
Um, so far it's been working out well for us. Um, throughout the county, it's been pretty busy like expected on the east side. Um, the, uh, or the west side, sorry. The east side of the county, pretty much from the iconic over, doesn't get much use from it. Uh, the county doesn't like sending it over there and some people over there aren't happy. But, uh, the one, uh, BLS ambulance has been sitting at, uh, Washington Hollow there.
Yeah.
And, uh, they actually reached out to us and said, hey, since we're sitting out that way, can we use the bathroom at the firehouse to get inside for a little bit and have a clean bathroom? So, we agreed. So, they would be hanging out in Millbrook a little bit more and hopefully more available for us. But, uh, I mean, out of the three calls that we had to get mutually, or out of the four, uh, three times we had one of those, uh, supplemental ambulances come start heading this way at least.
Yeah.
So.
They were used on Sunday for the call up on Maple Hill.
Yeah.
Other than that, yeah.
So, so we're we're getting use out of it. Um, it's there when we've needed it for the most part. Um, on that, no, no issues for us at least from.
Okay. Um, I had former mayor Colopy go to that May first.
Yep.
Meeting. I don't know if anybody else.
Kim Bonus from the rescue squad.
Yeah, so I'll send you this email from him. It might be helpful. This is the summation and I'll just hit some points now for the board. Um, it was Sue Serino, Greg Pulver and Bill Deal with reps from Millbrook School, Stanford, Pine Plains Fire Department, uh, Dutchess County legislator Chris Drago, uh, Ted and Kim Bonus. Um, so the county is gonna hold quarterly meetings with municipalities to both share response data and solicit feedback on their efforts to reduce nuisance nine-one-one calls and supplement current municipality provided EMS by assisting with mutual aid. Um, current supplemental staffing consists of two BLS ambulance and one ALS fly car, all on twenty-four seven from Empress. The home base for the fly car is Pleasant Valley as we know, as we've seen it. Um, the county kicked off this supplemental support using two million of ARC funds, uh, initially, but this is kind of important for all of us to think about. Uh, they plan to continue funding by implementing an IMA with municipalities starting in twenty twenty-six whereby municipalities who use the supplemental service will be billed accordingly. So, that fly car gets used for us, they're gonna send us a bill for it. Something for you want to think about. I mean, we're already paying a crazy amount for NDP.
Right.
So, I don't know if we want another bill coming in or.
Yeah, uh, I mean, I do have to say it it's definitely cut down on our giving mutual aid for our ambulance. It's been able to keep our ambulance in district instead of going to other towns. I mean, no, no one for us was abusing it. It was all legitimate. Now, second calls in their district once a month.
Yeah.
Maybe twice. Um, but it it has saved us from needing that and it has cut down on response times of getting someone else to come when we have a second call in the district. Um, no, it's something we'll have to talk about more once they have a better idea of what the bill might be and stuff like that.
Yeah. Um, the data for the first quarter in this year showed that the service dispatched five times for the village and the town, which they claim was a slow quarter. Uh, Ted knew the details of each incident. Um, that's pretty much it for for this. But, I mean, again, we gotta think about, you know, having another another bill coming in. That would be, I don't know how much those calls cost. Do you have any sense of does it depend?
It it's gonna depend. I mean, out of the three times that they came to us, I think they only got on scene once.
They turned around.
And then, yeah, they got turned around twice and I don't think they even transported it the third time. They just kind of showed up. So, I don't know if it's going to be a, we got this special, it's an automatic four hundred dollars for us to move to you.
Yeah.
And then plus whatever supplies and hospital trip or if it's gonna be a, hey, every time we get on scene, it's a eight hundred dollar item. I'll I'll have to talk to them and find out what their thought process is on the bills and how they work that.
Yeah. Yeah, keep us in the loop there.
Absolutely.
And I'll send you this in case it's it's helpful.
Yep.
Um, okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Matthew.
And trustee.
I have a quick, quick question.
Yeah, of course.
Um, I had, uh, um, a woman come to me and, um, you guys came and answered that out of control brush fire that they started. And they were super thankful and she wanted to know how she could donate or give some kind of money gift. I told her to come to the office, but is there something, I mean, if something wants, if someone wants to, you know, we provide services. I mean, what do I say to these people when they want to give some kind of money gift to thank them for coming and, you know, because they know it costs money and.
Give them that stuff.
The O box two oh two.
There we go.
If there is more information on our website as well.
Okay.
If we just set up some stuff.
Okay. And they can just send you a check.
Yep.
And make it out to.
Millbrook Fire Department.
Millbrook Fire Department. Okay.
Yep.
All right.
The, uh, carnival location has since changed from the last, uh, village board meeting. We are going back to the Thorn building. Uh, request of the landowner of St. Joseph's School. Um, I had a meeting with George Wayland and Oakley Thorne, uh, the week before the dinner and they, uh, gave me permission to go back. And I'll hopefully and possibly, uh, going down to Bennett next year.
Cool. Sounds good. And the and the dinner was a good time. Had by all.
Yeah, we'll have some job matter as always.
Yeah, it's very nice.
That it?
Was it the box for that?
What's the what? The firehouse two?
Two oh two.
Two oh two.
That's all I have.
Okay, cool. Chief, what's that?
Good evening, everyone. So, police department respond to two hundred and eleven calls for service. I'll give you an opportunity to think on that. Nothing unusual.
Yeah. My dog got arrested.
Oh, is that right? Okay, we took him away.
I was, I was away. I got a call from my neighbor that the police ran into her with my dog who was fourteen and just this giant yellow lab who's completely dead was up at Cardinal Maze.
Oh, that's a lot of coyotes.
Well, yeah, whatever. Anyway, they brought him to play ball.
Oh, that's sweet.
I went to run him out and he just had to go to get in the shower. So, this is, but he didn't make a fleece flutter, so we're good.
Um, so if there's no questions about the next part is investigation. So, these are the four investigations we handled, uh, during the month of April. One domestic incident, one mental health, one unattended death and one neighbor dispute. Uh, as as far as the programs go, we received nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars in donations from local businesses to purchase educational material for kids, teens, uh, adults and seniors for the National Child Safety, uh, Council program. And hey, just as a reminder, that's the way that works. It's, um, donations are made to the council and that allows us to purchase educational material that we distribute to residents during, you know, some of the events that occur in the village. So, we'll set up a booth and then, you know, as the kids come up, we'll give them safety material. It's really good safety material. Um, and there for seniors as far as like phone scams and things of that nature, how to make sure your your residents is safe and protected from crime. So, it's a lot of really valuable information. I think it'll be, uh, a real bonus for us to be able to get that information out to the residents. That's all I have for you.
Is there no questions?
Um, it's the Patrick thing about trying to get the electrician to look at the lights. I've contacted him three or four times. I know that Mike has contacted him. So, I'm trying to figure out what the next steps are. Should we, somebody, uh, did you have any left talking?
I talked.
They didn't get to it yet though. Like how, I guess. He seems very busy, Mike.
Yeah, 'cause he's still supposed to be putting up the new lights in front of, um, Four Brothers New Restaurant. So, and that's been, I sent him a link to try to find for the new lights and everything and I haven't heard. Not much, so.
I'll talk to him and see if I can push him or maybe not be somebody else. You know?
I mean, I don't mind looking around and getting somebody else, but I just need to know what the proper protocol is to get that approved or whatever. Um, and the next project after the streetlights, I mean, there are certain things that I know I have to do right now. We still haven't had a CSC meeting and it's getting to be on June now. So, I thought maybe we can change the LCD lights in the in the office. It gets us one step closer to bronze metal. Um, I don't know. I think we're still not at bronze right now today. We're not. And unfortunately, I think the the month to the deadline again is now coming up. It's either in June or it's July and here we are in the middle of May. So, I think we're at a stalemate with it. I don't know how how much, you know, I should go for it, but you know, that would be for further discussion maybe. Um, but those are my hopes to what I wanted to do to further us, to get us further there. I think it would save us money.
Well, we have, can we have an app application in right now?
So, you saw the application? You you know about that?
Yeah. No, no, we're, we didn't have bronze yet.
Chief, thank you by the way. Um, uh,
I just don't know much.
Our application is in and it's being viewed. So, they.
So, you you saw the application and you saw it go through?
It's definitely in. I mean.
It's definitely in. Okay. All right.
I think we'll find out until maybe next month, I think. Um, but I think you guys are having a meeting or trying to schedule one. So,
Right, and that just doesn't happen. That's why I I just, I I'm just letting you know what
Yeah.
what I'm trying to do on my own, you know, just to get that further along.
Yeah.
I think it would, and I think if we do all LCD lights, that's part of another action that we can do. If we do the village hall and it would not entail, um, like necessarily doing the ballasts. You they, you can, you can get like a converter, like if we have an A or a B ballast, we'll be able to just convert it instead of changing the fixtures completely. So, it accepts an LCD light. So, I think that would save us money. I think we could maybe get it, but in the long run, it will save us money. And I'm just looking at that.
Well, let's let's try to get Mike first, you know, the outside stuff.
Okay, okay.
Because he's done a lot of work for the village.
I I just haven't been very effective in.
No, I I he's he's notoriously slow and and the former mayor mentioned that as well. So, that's not.
Okay.
That's not your, um, issue, I don't think.
Okay.
There. Um, as for everything else, I think you guys, you should bring it up to the group when we next and then.
Yeah, I'm in talks with them.
You formally recommend it, then, you know, we're happy to borrow it with there.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
All right.
Um, Highway.
Highway. I just want to first off, thanks residents for cooperating with the parking ordinance we put in for Monday for not parking on the road for street sweeping. We only had a handful of cars. So, they were able to go through and really pick up a lot of stuff.
Thanks to you for coming in early. Ethan came in very early, um, on Monday and papered all the cars.
Sunday.
Uh, Sunday.
Sunday.
And, um, did a great job. So, that's all. Thank you.
Except for the three cars on Church Street.
Mine as well.
I was watching that street. Um, other than that, fixed drainage issue up on Church Street. Uh, every time it rains, it floods over through there by the by the little bridge there. So, we kind of cut shoulders. Got the water finally flow off of there. Uh, cleaned up the property on forty-four A, made a big topsoil pile from all the wood chips and dirt that's over there. It's just gonna make some really nice material. Um, attended the shade tree committee meeting to express concerns concerns of the highway department. Um, and we started with contacting New York State DOT about changing all the alleyways, Flechery, Pilgrim, Cullen, West Program and Russell Knowles and make them into Village Roadways. Um, we already maintain them as it is now. So, we might as well get Chip's money.
Mm-hmm.
And funding from the state for taking care of them.
Agreed.
Um, other than that, that's pretty much it.
And, um, paving Washington that is set for after school.
I've got to say, yeah, I want to wait for school to be closed. So, we don't have to fight buses and we can try to close. I'd really like to close the roof down. Remember when they mill it, mill it and then give us a couple of days in between just in case we have to change any structure tops or anything.
It's what, like July or late June or?
July, probably mid-July. I gotta talk to Metcalf. I'm probably gonna talk to him in the next week or two and figure out his schedule.
If you're in for July, please wait until after the twelfth.
Okay.
So, we're not bouncing into you guys during that week.
We got.
Other part of the board. Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll push it for later in July. That's not not having everything in there. So.
I know, uh.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, good. Good, good idea, Don. Um, okay, any questions from the trustees?
Oh, I have one question. We're out painting curbs right now and I spoke with Dominic about this. Um, the curbs that were painted yellow for no parking and the hydrants, hydrants are painted yellow, the curbs. We change them to painted red. So, one would be more visible for the fire department to see where a hydrant is and it's still, would it still count as no parking in front of the hydrant?
What's the code say for enforcement?
I don't know. I don't know.
Yes. As far as enforcement goes, that's just something we'll have to work out and go outside of that.
Would be hard to change the code if we had to, if we painted them now red and.
Are we having trouble finding them or something or?
No, I just figured it'd be easier to see because some of them are tucked in a little bit and just thanks to.
Is this an issue?
It's not a huge issue, but it would make it a little more differentiated for us going, hey, is that no parking or is that a hydrant spot? Just, I mean, we don't use hydrants a terrible lot in the village. So, a little different marking would make it a little quicker and easier if we did need them.
It was just a thought I thought of when we're out painting curbs this week. So.
And if I entice the public to really not park in front of them versus.
Are they parking in front of them?
Oh, they they park in front of hydrants. They park in front of the rescue floodbays.
I see.
Trying to get food from Julian's. They're just blocking right up there. People park right in front of the fire truck doors on Front Street.
Right. The code says first. Yeah, we'll look at the code. Let's not do anything before that.
Yeah.
See what the code says first.
Um, I know.
Yeah, and don't change that because if it's gonna screw up with enforcement to get.
No, no, that's not gonna.
Get cars towed and stuff.
Bring it up first.
To make sure, yeah.
And I know Chief just putting in order for, um, we were basically had a parking ticket, making tickets. So, Chief just putting in order for.
You've given out that many tickets?
A bunch.
Are you? Get some money in here.
A bunch of.
Let's go.
So, once we get those, we're gonna be focusing a lot more on on people parking in in the in the yellow zones and, you know, corners and.
I had a gentleman this morning, I'm painting the curb in front of the deli and he pulls right up as I'm painting the curb. Can I park here? So.
Scott's your new yellow curbs?
He did too.
I hope he got it on his car.
Oh, yeah.
Tired.
Yeah, so we'll look at that from up here. Any other questions from the trustees? Thank you, Ethan. Scott?
All right, on the water side, we did all sampling and maintenance. Uh, replaced, uh, fire hydrant on Maple Avenue. Uh, that would be the next issue. Um, so that's done.
Can we move the fence?
No, uh, we actually moved the hydrant.
You did.
I meant with the homeowner in compromise. So, the water line was blown up, waved and hired to swing and moved out.
Got it.
Didn't move the fence for us so we can do the work.
Okay.
So.
Was that additional clocks to the village or?
I don't know.
No other longs?
How far was it off the main?
Uh, well, I did, we didn't see the main, but, um,
It was good.
I moved it three feet off of the fence. So.
Yeah, so I drove by. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good.
Want to see no long-term reprofessions?
Nope. Everybody's happy. So.
Okay, it's a good thing.
Right?
Totally.
Um, they installed new water line over Raven Brakes. Um,
Yeah.
And that was inspected and it was good.
Perfect. I think it was perfect.
Um, we installed four new water meters and repaired four others and flushed all the fire hydrants.
Free car wash, yeah.
Yeah, that was.
I had lots of people stop by, including Mr. Murphy. Not that one, but the older one.
Any water questions for Scott?
There's lots of water out there right now.
Yes.
Yeah. It's a deal. They're lagging for that.
Okay.
All right. So, on the sewer side, all maintenance and sampling, uh, had M and O come out, flush the sewer lines on Friendly Lane, which goes to the library. Um, later this summer, I have plans to have that inspected. So, I just clear up where the issue is. This is two years in a row they've had an issue. Yeah.
Of it, was it like not a great pitch to her or?
I don't know. Um.
Valleys have been clogged, three rooms maybe.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the the manhole is like in the center of Friendly Lane and runs on an angle to the library. So, approximately half of it's our responsibility, the other half is theirs. I don't know where the issue lies. Um, so during our camera work this summer, I will have that done. And we'll determine at that time who's responsible and pick the issue, what the issue is. I suspect it's the trees that are there, which is definitely a case anyway. So, hopefully, and then if it is our responsibility, we'll get it taken care of.
Yeah, I know they'll be thankful too.
Yeah. So, because they did have the their line replaced from the building out to about the sidewalk. Uh, Tommy, Tennessee did it probably over ten years ago. So, my guess is it's somewhere between that point and the edge of the road, which would be our property. So, we'll figure that out this summer. Uh, new sewer line was installed for the old Slam and Sama building and that one went perfectly as well. Yeah. Um, cleaned the filter beds, sludge beds, uh, earth care hall, the sludge doctor. And we started working on setting up hearing ORF as part of the SOP for the EPA order that we have.
I'll just keep that up for for the rest of the trustees, kind of, if we can go a little
Sure.
a little more detail. So, this is, as everybody knows, we've, since the EPA came in, um, unannounced last summer and audited uh, the sewer plant, um, Scott, Ticken Bond, former mayor Colopy, myself, we've been on countless calls with them. Um, former mayor Colopy was, you know, reached out to, um, Congressman Pat Ryan's office to try to get some, uh, easing of some of the, um, restrictions they were putting on us. I I reached out to, uh, Dutchess County Executive, uh, Serino's office, who reached out to to people at the EPA as well. So, we kind of took a dual-pronged approach to try to have the EPA at least, we're to pump the brakes on how they were enforcing some of these things and try to reduce the cost to the village, uh, for something that's gonna be replaced in a couple of years anyway. So, um, you know, the calls got increasingly more friendly with the EPA as we went on. Um, Scott and and Ticken Bond were were very responsive to all of their questions and all of their issues and, um, really just countless calls for the last five months since I've been mayor. Um, and I think we're pretty much at the finish line. And so, one of the things they want us to do between now and and will be dismantle the ORF, and this is a very non-technical answer. We're gonna be, um, you know, shooting air into the ORF, breaking up this the sludge, this scum layer that's on top. So, it can be, um, run through the plant.
Removed through our normal sludge.
Removed and treated, yeah.
Basically. Um, so this was kind of like the cheapest, one of the cheapest, easiest ways that Scott and his team could do it in-house. Um, that also satisfied the EPA. Um, so we haven't started really yet because flows have been and levels have been really high. But once they return to a normal, um, level, just just give us a couple sentences on what we're gonna be doing.
So, basically what we're, I don't know if anybody's familiar with the plant, but it's the big gray tanks. You probably all seen it. There's only one that's active. That's what we're talking about here. Um, it's basically a retention basin for when the flows are high, which they are and it's just all the rain. Um, now, that it was put in place in like the mid nineties, I believe. Um, what what's happened over time is there's just been a layer of scum and material that sits on the top of the EPA. It doesn't want that. So, we have to try to remove it short of spending hundreds of thousands of dollars to have someone come in and actually clean it out. Um, we we decided to see if we can aerate it, break it up, which we've done in the past, um, get it to settle and then remove it through our normal process. That's, you know, basically where we're at right now. We're just waiting because tank is full. I gotta get the tank level down. So, when I do that, it doesn't go down through the regular process. So, whenever the flow is received and we can get back. Whenever the flow is received and we can get back down to normal levels in that tank, we will go at it and start working.
Any questions about that?
I'm just curious, did you have, you already have the equipment to do that?
Yeah, well, we.
Because you've done a big.
Well, we we, in in the past, we did it with an air compressor.
That's what I was wondering.
So what we have on site, there's two old blowers that used to be used for our sludge digester. And in two thousand eighteen, we bought new blowers for the aeration tanks, which we tied into the digester, so we don't, we weren't using the old ones. So we were able to hook them up, use just an air compressor blowers. Um, we and we just had to do some, put some fittings on the tank, so. We're gonna be using, utilizing that as opposed to renting a compressor and creating a whole bunch of noise. Cause the 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 process um, that we set upon was to aerate for twenty-four hours, so. A rented air compressor, that's awful noisy.
Yeah.
You'd probably hear it. You shot that far away, I know you hear it.
I'm across, I, yeah, yeah, I hear it.
Um, so the blowers are inside a building.
Cause I was like, is something running in the house? So I'm like, well.
Oh yeah. So the blowers will are just like a, like it would sound like a house.
Right.
So.
Okay.
But wasn't there another? That's gonna be significantly cheaper.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, obviously we'll be using more electric, but.
Yeah. For air, serve for twenty-four hours, that's not long, you know?
Right, yeah, plus we already had the equipment. It's just been sitting there. We had to get it to work, but, you know, cause it's just been sitting there so that it was seized up, so we gotta get it rotated, lubricated, everything, got it working, so.
Yeah. Now, I think we were all kind of pleasantly surprised they actually accepted this.
Yeah.
The whole zol.
Yeah.
So, um.
And it's just gonna take time, I mean, it's it's not gonna happen in one week, it's not gonna happen in a month, it's, you know.
Mm-hmm.
It's a time thing, so we'll just keep working at it.
Yeah. And they they come and inspect it at the end or no? Are they just like?
It's something we're we're hoping not, drastically.
Goes wrong?
No, we're hoping no. You know, I hadn't seen him for twenty-three years and then they show up, so, you know.
Uh. They had nothing but positive feedback for all of Millbrook's responses. Uh, how forthright and and quick we were in our responses and how we really tried to come to a a middle ground, so.
Right.
It it really did end very on a positive note. Um, so thanks for all your hard work on that, Scott, especially. A couple other things that Scott has been working on and and myself as well, uh, in regards to the to the sewer plant, so, um. With New York State DEC, the Speedies permit, that has been, I think it's been submitted, not quite yet.
Well, they had, I don't remember the timeframe, but they had to go through a public comment period.
Okay.
I I don't remember what their timeframe was, but um, gotta be close to being finalized.
So we're the tail end of our New York State permit to operate the current plant. Uh, which has gone through again a couple iterations based on how flows change and they you, they were using different metrics. Um, so we're in the tail end of that, so that's good, and then today, we had a call, myself, Scott, Tickenbond are engineers, former Mayor Colopy about, it was an initial engineering discussion on the new plan, um. And of all the kind of testing and geological testing they've done uh, so far, um. All things are looking pretty good, I think we can use gravity for most of, most of the, um. I don't know what the word is.
Most of the process, so.
Most of the process, if they use pump too much.
Yeah, right. The the idea being, you know, the the more things you have to pump, it's more cost energy-wise, there's also more you know, things to break down and fix and everything else, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, currently the plan is that has minimal pumping, you know. That's why it's down the bottom of the hill, when everything flows downhill, so. Um, you know, they're, they are hopeful that they could get that and they and they did, so we are gonna have some pumps. But they're basically gonna be like a like like a backup, so like when the flows get high like they were last week. You know, if the flow were to, and it can't all flow gravity, they would, the pumps would basically be in addition. So the pumps would handle it, that excess flow and keep it going.
So this is a, this is a very early on initial engineering discussion with with some schematics and plans. Uh, once they send them to me, I'll distribute them to the trustees so you can take a look. Um, it's kind of technical, I don't really know what I'm looking at. Uh, interesting nonetheless. Uh, so that's, that's going on um, as well, so we've been very busy on the on the sewer front the last couple months. Um. Final questions for Scott? Scott, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Clint?
Alright, so for building um, Department Head for the month of April, it's actually kind of a slow month. But we've had it a while. Um, we only had one building permit issued, um, two certificate of of occupancy, six certificate of compliances. And we collected a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Uh, planning and zoning, they did not have an April meeting, but they they had one meeting this month already, uh, planning, I think it was Monday, and then I believe zoning they're supposed to have a meeting, I think, next week. Um, and then we're moving ahead with the short-term rentals, um, those that have received their approvals uh, in June of twenty twenty-four, they're due for their second year fire inspection. Um, so hopefully Justin and the dealers are making arrangements for that, but I'm not sure how that works.
I think we're gonna have an at least one more short-term rental application coming in once they get some other stuff figured out on Elm. Is what on Elm going in, and then I sent, I gave everyone this email that I received a uh, a couple weeks ago, I wanted to discuss it as a group.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so this gentleman, he lives on Linden Lane, he's been operating an an Airbnb for, since we've allowed them uh, legally, and you can read it basically, um, he's gone through the process uh, the whole time and 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 follow the rules. Uh, basically, he as Clerk Whit said, everybody has to reapply basically by by June, um, for for another year. And he has some reservations for, um. Yes, in the summer, uh, but then he's taking it offline in September uh, to do a lot of renovations, so uh, what he was asking me is if we could have some sort of reduced rate. And I talked to Justin, uh, our inspector, and and he said it would be a board decision. So, um, from my point of view, he definitely needs to still pay for the fire inspection fee, which is a hundred fifty dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Otherwise, the annual fee is five hundred dollars, um. So I don't know if anyone has an opinion about what we would charge him or not charge him uh, for basically.
For the seven weeks, is that what he says?
Yeah. Um, now, I told them, listen, you can't, you know, just if something changes and you wanna start renting until January, it's you have to, you know.
Freebie.
It's not gonna be uh, a freebie, uh, and he understood that, um, but it seems like he's not gonna be doing that, so.
I think it'd be super fair to ask him if he's gonna pay for the fire inspection and prorate the because he was already active, I mean, it could get a little hairy with people saying, oh, I'm just gonna
Yeah, that's the idea.
I'm gonna short-term, you know, I want a short-term rental, I know you did this for someone else, so I only wanna pay two months added. That's not the case, but with the fact that he's already been doing it.
Yeah.
He's being super honest about it. I think if he gets the fire inspection, which is the most important, right, that's why we're um, then prorate the yearly, that's that's what I think.
Works for me.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you gotta be careful though, cause you could.
I I I say and
The shore.
I don't know, I say make it like.
Never really been able to, gonna start going thus, you know.
You know, if it's if it's seven weeks, make them, I don't know.
Pay half?
Pay half, that's exactly what I'm thinking.
They've also made a lot of money doing these things, so let's let's be fair.
Right.
They made a ton of money.
So then have him say, well, okay, we'll cut it in half. You know, because because everyone's gonna come and be like, well, he only had seven weeks and now we gotta dummy down to that.
And that would definitely happen.
Yeah, so then
You can do a lizard, right?
Let's just say six months.
Okay, that works for me.
He needs the money.
That works for me, great, thank you, team, uh, perfect. And then, um, also on building, um. And I mentioned last meeting, I believe, Ken and Justin have been working hard to update some of the fees that we charge for projects, construction projects in the village. And so I just received this last night from Justin, um, and I'd like a discussion and then hopefully an approval of of these new fees, um. So one family, two family, townhouses, grease trap, which is important also for the EPA and the DEC. Um, this was part of our our SOPs as well, that we were actually instituting a grease trap inspection program, which will be annual.
That's only in restaurants.
Yeah. Um. And then statement of use, I'm assuming you know what that is. Uh, oh, basically, each time you have a project, you have to say what it's for.
When you open a business.
Open a business.
Yeah.
Okay. So some of these projects are in limbo right now, and Ken and Justin wanted us to, um, you know, approve these new fees, um, to match other municipalities and to also match what we budgeted for.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so these were the most kind of time-sensitive that they want to prove. And they'll be coming back to us in due time with some of the other um, fee updates as well. Uh, but these are the most time-sensitive. Patrick, any thoughts or questions from a construction perspective?
Obviously, the left is the old prices, right's the new.
Um. Is that right?
I'm not sure.
Lot more, a more detailed fee schedule prepared for us for for the June meeting. I think grease trap and inspection are new. That's why they, that's why they haven't, that's why they don't change column to column, but the other three are obviously increases.
Questions or comments?
I want to go up much.
Yeah.
How much are the increases?
Not.
Is is that what?
So two fifty to three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it's.
Two hundred to two fifty.
Hundred to two fifty, three, two fifty.
Oh, I see.
And he's going up fifty dollars.
Okay.
That's very reasonable.
I, yeah. And when was the last time it went up?
I think we did it recently.
Twenty-four was the last time.
Oh.
And before that, it was like a long time.
It was a long time, yeah.
Okay, alright, okay. Yeah, then that sounds pretty cool.
And this is comparable to the other municipalities in the county too, so.
Okay.
Ken, uh. Ryan, back.
The range, you know, or ten?
No, it's good.
Alright, um, can I have a motion to approve these fee updates?
Aye. I'm gonna approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Excellent.
Um. Before we get into new business, any? Oh, isn't it?
Do you want to do the treasure report?
I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I always do that.
I'm getting used to it.
I always do that. Always forget.
Um, so here are the um, bank statements for um, the end of April. Um, so if you have any questions, uh, feel free to let me know. And these are the New York class ones. Um, completed the tax cap compliance and constitutional tax limit, which is a really fun fun form from the state, um, filed the local law for the tax override, um. A lot of tax, I'm just going on right now. Earlier, like, they were all over the place, so. Yes, um, so working on that, um, and for Department Head. Um, May thirty-first is the last day of our, this fiscal year. So we need all those bills in by the beginning meeting. So that we can pay for it in this, with this fiscal year, before we close in July. Heads up. And, um, oh, I just wanted to thank everyone for the purse donations, it was very successful, we donated a hundred and fifty purses. More or less, and oh, like four boxes of toiletries and they were beyond grateful. For.
Oh, that's.
Well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thank everybody.
That's all I have. Yeah.
It wasn't lack even, um, they helped out as well, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they were a big part of contributions, so.
Thanks for that, Josh, your team.
Yeah.
Um, that was great work. It was. Uh, speaking of Josh, um, the chief Patrick, former Mayor Colopy, um, had a very, I don't know if I mentioned it previously, had a very um, important and um, fruitful meeting with one of the chief's um, contacts at New York State DOT regarding, um. Mostly big trucks on Franklin. Uh, in this, you know, multi-decade issue that uh, we've been having in the village here. And uh, correct me if I'm wrong, either of you, um. Basically, what New York State DOT kind of suggested and 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 uh, was okay with was that if we enter into an IMA with the town, basically saying um, that both entities agree that large trucks should be directed to not go through the village. Uh, they would go around the village, they would take the old forty-four A, uh, which is another state road. Eighty-two up there, um. And that if we put signage at, say, the Bennett Light and the gatehouse, um. They would look at this, at this IMA, make sure it is okay. We could put up the signage and then we could start enforcing it from a police perspective. Um, which is a great uh, result after, again, many, many years, decades of of sort of trying to deal with this problem. So. Attorney Mackey and I had a had a discussion and I also spoke with the town supervisor or a couple of town board members. They were on board with this approach, uh, so Josh is gonna be working with the town's attorney to sort of hammer up this IMA.
Yes.
Um. Anything I missed there from a legal perspective?
No, I've uh, communicated with the town attorney already and he just wants a draft, so it's actually underway. And there'll be a resolution for both boards, the town board and this board. Resolution to enter into the IMA, so we should be able to do that by next meeting, right?
That's great.
And what what Chief has has told me, and correct me if if I'm misremembering anything, that, um, you know, as we know um, you know, right over here on Franklin, it gets it gets very narrow, especially when there's cars parked.
Oh. Yeah.
Oftentimes, a regular car has to hit the yellow line or sometimes go over it. Uh, which is actually a violation, and we could be enforcing uh, some of these things, you know, now, but but definitely going forward once these truckers have kind of a heads up about the situation, um. So, we're looking forward to to working with with your team to hopefully get this done.
Yeah, we're gonna go.
Right? Any comments, questions about about that and the trustees?
That's exciting.
Yeah.
So, how will that, um, will they actually? Will we be able to give them tickets if they're on our, if they're on Franklin?
Mm-hmm, so I think, so it would probably be a weight limit, right? I think, Jack, was that discussed, a weight limit?
In D W.
Um.
We commercial trucks.
That's a good.
Yeah, yes, I think that's probably a good way to go as with commercial.
A special plate to.
Be like local deliveries only kind of thing.
Right.
So yeah, if they're servicing things locally, if you're doing landscaping in somebody's yard, obviously you have to.
Or you're the each truck that has to come and deliver to the hardware store.
So. Right.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all, that's all.
Since a truck. You just have to approve, right?
Right.
And is there anything like on any of the, um, like ways or on any maps that give any indication for, it does, if there's any?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you have certain apps that you can have as a commercial truck, or that is only commercial truck traffic.
That's a good, okay. Oh, okay.
I wonder if that'd be something for us to look into, maybe to get so that whatever these services are, these applications, know to direct trucks around the village, you know? so that whatever these services are, these applications know to direct trucks around the village, you know.
I think DOT verifies if it goes out down the key house and it's just it shows the commercial truck route.
Oh, no, no, no. Cool. That's oh, that's great.
I think once New York State kind of blesses us, once the signage goes up, then
Okay. Yeah.
probably there's some sort of official notification.
Yeah, that goes through that goes through all the commercial GPSs.
Um.
Yeah.
I think probably more details to follow exactly how it would hammer out, shake out, but um that's all we have so far. So we're getting forward with this.
That's all.
Yeah. Big steps.
Yeah, I think that would be really well received by the community. Um okay, thank you, Josh. We stick around. Um comments from the public? I don't see anybody. Um.
I have a question for Josh, but the resolution for alleyways, do we have to do anything legally to do?
Well, let's talk about it first and and then maybe, but basically wanna, I don't know if you heard him before, we wanna
Take over.
Make these alleyways official village streets so as to receive more funding basically to stay.
So yeah, there's there has to be resolutions for that, you know. Basically they gotta dedicate it back to the village. There's a process for that.
Yeah, we have to notify the homeowners on the road about it.
Yeah. Yep.
So it's the homeowners that collectively own that little alleyway?
Yeah.
I think it's kind of almost unclear on.
Is that right?
I think it's alleyway by alleyway.
You just water and sewer rooms.
Is.
And we plant it.
Well, maybe.
Have stools on it, trees on it.
Oh, we maintain it.
Yeah.
Hmm, all of them?
All of them. Historically, we maintain them. It's unclear exactly why other than there are some facilities there.
Mm-hmm.
And we think that some of them, if you look at the title, the deed, the map is gonna have, some of them say they own part of it, some of them say they don't.
Yeah, if you look at like parcel access, their property lines almost run right down the center of those those roads.
So that's the only issue.
Parcel access is is a clue, but not
Yeah.
Not see it, not stated, if I don't tell me all my couple feet, but I mean.
Not responsive. Yeah.
But how it treats, even how parcel access treats all of the alleyways is a little bit different. I think one, one or two are
Mm-hmm.
private and then the others seem more like a a public road, so um something for someone to look into over there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think, is there a better way to build that mousetrap? I don't know, the village taking over. But I'll I'll give it some thought.
Mainly taking over just so we would have more.
We want more funding, we get funding from the state for maintaining it like we do with all the other roads.
Got it. Okay.
For laying.
We want credit.
Essentially, we want the wrong credit, but we don't wanna take care of them at all. But if it's gonna be a huge, you know, century-long deed search, that's gonna be a huge legal bill that I think.
I'll let you know.
Well, up for or not, you know. Yeah.
Sure. Then we then we gotta look at another way.
Yeah. Uh we can send you the list of wow.
Yeah, I'll I'll send you the maps of every all the thing, all the lists.
Okay.
I was hoping it would be easy, maybe it's.
Yeah, DOT, DOT, when I spoke with DOT, they said it was gonna, it's just
Does it go online?
Does.
Okay.
The town or the village making a resolution and then we submit it to DOT.
Which is significant.
Really?
So but I didn't know if there was anything on the other side that would
Yeah. What's uh?
Would hinder almost.
Would the owners of the painting whatever they own, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
And you're just taking the the public right away?
The public right away, that's it. The road that's already there, already black on the roads.
Yeah. Okay.
We got streetlights there?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You know where they are.
Yeah, I do. I've just never been down though.
With you.
I know, no, me neither.
'Cause I think they're private.
Honestly, me neither.
Where where do people put out their garbage back there or in or in the front of their houses?
Some of them are in that alleyway.
Yeah.
Especially on Pilgrim, Vletree and West Pilgrim and Cullen.
Colin.
Yeah, so I'd say.
Vletree, the village paid a couple of years ago.
Oh, Colin. They hate Colin.
Colin too, maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
They hate Colin.
So.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna pay it if it's not ours.
Wow.
It's interesting.
What are you gonna drop off or email to me again?
The maps and all the lists.
Any?
You have that?
Yeah.
Right, you gonna email it or drop it off?
It's just whatever's easier.
Whatever's easier for you.
I can drop it off.
Alright, come by and we'll look at it. And if I'm there asking you, I'll come in and we'll talk about it.
Okay.
You wanna call ahead of time.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you.
Sure.
So let us know on that, Josh. Thank you. Um alright, we already figured out the STR request fees um retirees um Ethan, a member of, another member of the village highway department has inquired about um when people retire from the village instead of, so what we do now, so all the trustees know, is from a long year vacation or sick?
Sick.
Sick. So any unused sick days, we pay out employees' farm.
Right.
So when Ethan's uh the gentleman we even replaced retired Bob, we paid him out a big chunk of change, thirty one?
It was probably about that.
Probably thirty thousand dollars uh which is a big budget hit, obviously. We don't necessarily always know exactly when it's gonna happen, who we did for this one, but it's still a a big budget hit. Um and it still will be in a sense, but uh what they have brought to us as a board, I wanted to bring to you uh to discuss and think about, no decisions tonight, uh would be to instead of giving them that thirty thousand dollar check all at once, if they could stay on village health insurance and we pay their premiums, let's say it's thirty thousand dollars that we owe them. We would pay a monthly premium until they went on Medicare?
Yep.
Or until that thirty thousand dollars is extinguished. Um so it'd be, it would be a slower burn for us. We don't have to pay it out monthly. Um our current insurance provider MVP, uh there's no issue with them. Um and I think the state and maybe some other.
Yeah, a lot of the municipalities have a retiree program where they pay a percentage, so like now we're paying fiscal by next year one percent. The the next retiree will pay ten percent or whatever of the premium. So they have, but they have a plan worked out like that.
Especially if retire, if village employees retire, you know, before they hit Medicare age. Um this would be, this would be helpful for them. Um and it'd be helpful for us, we wouldn't have to take the huge hit all at once. And uh I don't know much more than than that, uh but I think it's something for us to think about um and maybe offering at some point. Unless there's, unless I'm missing something, it seems like probably a good idea because it's not such a huge budget hit for us all at once. Um.
So if they hit um just I know these are more details, but looking at every angle of it, if they were to hit Medicare age and their monies had not run out um with then then you would pay the balance. Okay, so it's not a, okay.
So.
But ju- just for like what's going on, like Jeff's gonna probably a couple of years, like two years before he hits Medicare before he goes retire. And Darren would be about the same, so it would only be for like two years and that and that thirty thousand dollars would be chewed up quickly with insurance, so.
Right.
As we know from the budget.
I I think you, I think you would extingu, they would extinguish it before you have to kind of pay it out.
Yeah.
As we know from the budget, medical care costs are just, they go up there huge amounts every year, so thirty thousand dollars sounds like a lot, but it might not, you know, it only lasts whatever it is, you know, if it's a single or or a family um rate, so um and they understand that and they still interested in 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 pursuing it, so um Josh, any legal considerations there? We should give you that.
Yes. So some, so the current employees, if they if they opt for it, that's that's fine, that's one thing. But if they don't wanna agree to it, I don't think you can force them to agree to it. There's a current handbook.
Right.
Um we should talk about the handbook, you know, that whole accrued uh PTO, there's other ambiguities there that I don't like.
Yeah.
So updating the handbook would be part of this process. You have to do that.
Yeah.
While we were doing that, we would clean up a few other things.
Yeah.
That's not a huge lift.
Yeah.
That that's what you have to do.
Okay. So we'll continue to think about it, think about it, mull it over. Um.
Well, we should definitely update.
Yeah.
Like as soon as can.
Yeah.
Because uh you know costs just keep going up and up for these things. And we have to kind of have a stopgap somewhere.
I think especially for new employees.
It's like a great. A tier two, you know, you you have different tier for new employees or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you can do that.
Grandfather, everybody that's getting out and all new hire.
Yeah.
It's here, people that shoot new hired tier two.
Yeah.
We have to go, we have to go with the times, otherwise we're gonna drown ourselves.
Yeah.
So policy.
It doesn't look like, I don't think that employee handbook's been updated for a long time.
Really?
I think the one I have is like two thousand ten.
Oh my god.
It might not even be, probably not even compliant with current law.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Good, good thoughts.
If you, so I can, we can revisit that later, if you'd like enough, okay?
Yeah, that's enough. Trustee updates. One update for me, the for the tennis court, we had a very uh thoughtful and generous donation by Mindy and Carlisle up the street
Oh, nice.
uh for some benches for for the tennis courts, uh so that was very nice of them. Um
That's great.
That's all for me. Any other updates? You had a couple environmental updates, anything else on that end?
Um.
We'll have that meeting at some point once you guys
Right. Right.
We're out of date.
Uh I I did I tried to get into the uh Zoom with Town of Washington. But the sound wasn't on and I tried it on my end to see if it was mine, so I'm gonna go in person for the next thing.
C S A or C A C?
C A C.
Good, okay, good idea.
So I'll go, I'll go next month, but I was, I failed when it came to the Zoom.
Yeah, yeah.
It didn't, no sound in it. I think it was on there.
They had two missions there. Alright, keep us the loop there.
Yes, I will.
Um.
I'm going next month.
Julia, any um
Sure, we had shade tree, shade tree has been busy.
Tree, tree stuff? Where are the trees going?
Yeah, as you know, we had our fabulous Arbor Day uh event. We made it into the Millerton News. There's some great pictures there. And so that was a win. And we met uh actually yesterday and we have, I was just speaking to Ethan, we have identified some trees that we are, we're trying to put a day together for um Out on a Limb.
Mm-hmm.
And I think we've got um eight trees that that we're looking to take down um that are that are dangerous and so forth. There's the find that Ethan is interested in taking down, we have to yeah, uh reevaluate. We're gonna get Brad Rauler um probably to come and do the sort of final sale of approval, like yes, here is our certified tree expert, these trees are dead, they need to come down. Um then we'll be contacting the homeowners and then we will put together uh again as we'll hopefully schedule choose me Out on a Limb to come and take care of those um items. Um we also, Mike Hertzler came to our meeting, talked about what we can do to uh support the Climate Smart Communities group. Um there's some talk about uh backyard composting as part of um working on the bronze uh field. And I think a lot of people are are already doing backyard composting. Um and just to sort of formalize that, we put together a flyer with a QR code and we put some questions on there, you know, are you doing it? Um anyway, we we and we're we're gonna talk more about that with the with the Climate Smart um community people. And we also are going to um go and bid out five trees, elms and maples um from Sibelico's, the Millbrook uh Gardens and Adams and um start putting the trees in the ground. And I'll be working with Ethan on that as well. Um I think we felt it.
Does it make sense to um put these trees out to bid like you had thought about?
We can, but like we were talking before, if we look at extensive bids with insurance and everything else, like I was talking to you. I think we can. But I mean, do you do you have Matt who's got a crane and everything else and we can see, we'll see what they have. We can put it out to bid and see what we have for numbers.
Oh, for example, they're taking this.
Yeah.
Out on a limb, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think so. Why not? I mean, they hurt their luck, you know, at least keep them honest. Yeah, I mean, that's not a deal.
That's fine, we can do that.
Okay.
Cause we're not, we're not, like I said, we're not in a rush to take it down. We just have to wait till June, at least June budget to come out, so.
If there was anything else, we would have to go out to bid, so.
Right, right. Well, yeah, we have to, we have to get three bids by trees.
I don't even know why we don't have to watch the bid now.
Yes, they give me give us last notice.
Okay, so who who else would, besides Out on a Limb, who else would?
Those areas.
There's a lot.
Well, we would.
Okay, so but you and I can talk about that?
It'd be a public bid notice.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'd go up there, a public bid notice.
Okay.
I think it's, doesn't hurt to do it.
Yeah, no, I agree. I absolutely.
And if they're, we still go with them, that's that's okay too.
Right.
And you're, we're planting, where are we planting trees? In those same spots?
No, no, so there there the trees that have to come down are trees that are are um problematic, they're dead, they're they're, you know, they're dropping limbs in the road
Right.
or potentially problematic. Where we are planning to plant trees are people who have um requested trees because they've had trees that have come down. So um there is one at fifty seven Maple, there's two out by the tennis courts. Structure Works would like one potentially. Um one twenty one Maple Avenue, uh thirty three ten Franklin Avenue. Um so I'm sort of inheriting this list.
Yeah.
But these are people who have asked, they have had trees removed and be, you know, because of in the past and they would like trees replaced. So that's how you get at the top of the list. Um the tennis courts, well, actually those those were trees that were um I think diseased and removed as well. So we are, in some cases we are replacing, I I guess in most case we're replacing trees that we've taken down.
Yeah.
But not, it's not a, trees were taken down this year are being replaced this year.
We're in a, we're in a lot.
Yeah, it's trees that we have uh previously taken down that are that we're now working to replace.
And at some point, let's just take a look at what we budgeted for all this too, so we're all within that. And I don't have the numbers.
So we, yeah, so we have a budget of forty eight hundred dollars. We are gonna go, we're gonna buy.
That's for planting or?
Planting.
Planting.
And we're gonna, we're planning to do um use half of that. So we're gonna, we're gonna spend twenty five hundred on on buying these new trees. We're gonna get Ethan to dig the holes and we're not, we're not, we're just, hopefully we're just buying the trees.
Yeah.
Um and we got like two inch to two and a half inch um diameter, whatever, there's a word for that.
Caliber.
Uh yeah, caliber, right. Um and we are uh yeah, and so and so yes, we're not, we're not gonna blow our budget all all at once here, cause cause in the fall there may be need to to do some other
Okay.
um some other things. So yeah, we're trying to be thoughtful about that.
Great.
When you're installing?
Do you know, our budget for removal, we
Was this thirteen?
Hundred?
Thousand.
For removal in the current budget or in in next?
Current budget or over budget?
Over budget.
That's why I gotta wait.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Trustee Soji?
So um working on the hazard mitigation plan and I not, I have not heard back from Jim
Oh, great.
or I know you had contacted them in an email. I reached out as well, so just looking at it a little bit more closely, I'm gonna probably be calling you.
The two the end of the month? What's month?
The twenty eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's some information that I know probably Jim would be able to answer very easily, but you know, I'm not as.
Yeah, I think they're, I'll make, let's let's ping them again to make sure that it's on their radar.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Um okay. Just send me an email on that or just email all of us at once?
Yeah.
Please, so I don't forget. Um thank you. Okay, great. And then one other thing for me, I just thought of um again, we received that, we did receive the C E B G grant for the sidewalks for the for the north side of Franklin, so um I'm trying to set up a initial meeting with Renia, Tom Harvey at Renia um to just kind of scope out where we are and if things have changed and um.
See if price increases or.
So we got one, one twenty five um these grants are always assuming that the village municipality is putting up some money as well. these grants are always assuming that the village municipality is putting up some money as well, so we gotta think about how much money we we wanna spend and if we wanna spend any more to do more work there on on Franklin, so I think more to come, but just to put on everyone's radar as well. Um that's it for me, anybody else have anything before we go into executive session? All right. Um I'll make a motion that we enter into executive session. Wait a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.